I never know if we need this, so I just lug it around. Would you say early before you go, you go all in?
I go all in.
I'd like to call to order the mayor and city council for the City of Tawnytown workshop for the month of August and ask Councilwoman Fuller to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. We have a full house tonight. It's good to see. Councilor, Mayor Pro-Tam Foster is recovering from recent surgeries, so she's not here. Everybody else is. We have a full agenda tonight, so I ask folks that offer remarks to be concise and to the point. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to take the opportunity at the top of our docket to kind of set the record straight, to give you the real truth, I guess, as it were. I want to report on the lawsuit that was filed by Councilman Frazier's wife regarding the open meetings violation and how it was decided. While the court didn't find that there were -- the court did find that there were two technical violations to the Open Meetings Act, they sided with the city in finding these violations were not significant or willful to merit the imposition of penalties or payment or other fines and costs requested by Ms. Frazier. They granted the judgment in favor of the city. While you were certain to hear the spin that her defeat was really a victory or that the judge was -- and the press got it wrong, or an appeal will be taken, I believe the court has spoken this matter has been decided. We're perfect in everything we do? Certainly not. No one is. However, like everyone, we strive for -- to be better for our citizens each and every day. In this case, the judicial process has been used by Mrs. Frazier to grandstand and regain a bit of the limelight she used to have before she lost her election as the bid for county commissioner.
Objection, Your Honor.
By citing -- by creating drama over minor issues that could have been resolved in a matter that would have not taken such a negative toll on the city and its citizens. Countless hours have been spent on meetings and dispositions and legal filings and proceedings, and thousands of taxpayer dollars have been spent on legal fees, tens of thousands of dollars on litigation expense. Employees have been taken away from their job duties. The city has been distracted from its true mission, priding for the best interest of its citizens. And perhaps worst of all, it has been tarnished -- it's been tarnished the city's image -- tarnished the image of the place that we call home. I hope this will be the end to all this mess and that we can push aside the drama in favor of some real results for the betterment of the city. But I fear that that's not the case. I'll ask council to please read a letter the city received last week.
Mr. Mayor, the letter is from the Cox Law Firm Law Center, LLC, dated February 21st, 2017, addressed to the mayor and city council, James L. McCarron, the members of the city council, Diane Foster, Judith Fuller, Joe Vigliotti, Brad Wance, former council members Angelo Zambetti, Carl Eball, city manager Henry Heine Jr., city attorney Jack Gallow, and John/Jane Doe. Regarding Councilman Donald Frazier's second notice of constitutional violation torts and notice of claims for defamation conspiracy under Maryland Code CJP 5304-LGTCA. Dear Mayor and city council at all, this is our second notice of claims pursuant to the Local Government Tort's Claim Act of illegal actions against Councilman Donald Frazier. Our initial letter of notice to you of illegalities and constitutional violations, hand-delivered June 13th, 2016, is incorporated as if set forth herein. These claims include, but are not limited to, constitutional torts seeking to diminish Councilman Frazier's legislative role and free speech, his due process and equal protection, his employment on the city council, and other constitutional claims under Article 24 of the Maryland Declaration of Rights, as well as the torts of defamation, conspiracy to defame, remove and deprive Councilman Frazier of his elected seat and of his salary and employment as councilman, and other potential claims such as federal causes of action, including RICO, two acts in furtherance of a conspiracy to deprive rights, and actions under federal statutes depriving the civil rights of Councilman Donald Frazier. Your actions have caused severe emotional and personal injury to my client, Mr. Frazier. These violations occurred in, but are not limited to, the following time, place, and causes. Bullet point: June 17th, 2017, the mayor, by consent of each of you, caused to be published in the Tawnytown Record a defamatory libel of Councilman Donald Frazier stating a falsehood, namely, that Councilman Frazier disclosed confidential documents on social media, and that this was done again, and that this is the second time the council has had to take such action. Both averments are false and defamatory, as the letter from Mr. Gallow is not and never was declared by any court to be attorney-client privilege, such that it became confidential documents. The letter was not multiplied multiple documents, as you stated in the record, and the council has never censured the Councilman Frazier prior to May 8th for posting confidential documents on social media. Mr. Frazier was greatly harmed by your defamation of his character, and his emotional injuries and damages are significant. Soon after this publication, you and/or your act of publishing this matter in the record caused distribution of the information to the Carroll County Times, and the city then slandered my client in interviews with the Carroll County Times, which interviews and statements were published without any notice of retraction or corrections from you. Bullet point: On May 8th, 2017, each of you, except possibly Mr. Heine, signed and/or supported a public censure of Councilman Donald Frazier for allegedly publishing confidential information on social media, namely, a political group he helps run as a part of his involvement in government politics. The censure was on false information, defamatory, malicious, and in violation of state law and of federal civil rights law, including the right to free speech, due process, equal protection, and Article 24 of the Maryland Declaration of Rights, deprivation of rights. Bullet point: On approximately April -- August 15th, 2016, Mayor McCarron, on information and belief with the consent of the councilmen, caused to be published a defamatory letter libeling Councilman Frazier entitled "Intent of Petition Might Be Misrepresented," causing or allow it to be published on the City of Tawnytown's website and distributed for publication to the Carroll County Times and to the citizens of Tawnytown. This letter was a violation of the public official involvement negatively in an election and further maliciously defamed Councilman Frazier by falsely referring to him and then alleging possible misrepresentation of the petition effort to bring the code of conduct allowing removal of councilmen for broad reasons to referendum. This act caused great harm to Mr. Frazier and a significant loss of his civil rights and painted him in a false light during an election and ballot issue. The City of Tawnytown used the pretextual false statement of potential misrepresentation and pretense to use city funds for a widely distributed negative campaign against the referendum, including calling the code of conduct a protection when the purpose of the referendum included a challenge to the protective purpose of the code of conduct as drafted. Bullet point: On or about June 2016, passing the code of conduct with the intent to conspire to silence Councilman Donald Frazier and public officials and remove him from office by censure and petition without any violation of criminal law or finding of an ethical violation. Bullet point: On April 6th, 2016, the city council defames Councilman Frazier by inferring the removal of office provisions of the code of conduct are necessary via censure for misconduct, listing sexual harassment, misdemeanors, Senator Larry Young and Baltimore Mayor Sheila Dixon, who was charged with crimes, as prime examples why the provisions for removal should be passed. Attorney Gallow then publicly states on behalf of the city that Councilman Frazier's question as to the overbreadth of the measure is just trying to tear apart what is trying to be put together again, publicly defaming and maliciously insinuating illegalities on behalf of Councilman Frazier, while also diminishing his elected position by executive overreach via city agent Attorney Gallow. Bullet point: On December 14th, 2015, attempting and failing in censuring Councilman Frazier for allegedly harassment of city employees, immediately dooring and in front of the public hearing with dozens of the town in attendance regarding a cannabis ordinance, then later that night allegedly passing an undrafted, unsigned, illegal, and defamatory censure for alleged harassment of city employees and lack of decorum. Bullet point: November 9th, 2015, city attorney Gallow, on behalf of the City of Tawnytown, read a confidential letter into the public record accusing Councilman Donald Frazier of grandstanding and showboating regarding the concern the city attempted to keep him off the ballot by an ethics commission attack through a friend of the mayor. Bullet point: That the City of Tawnytown and each prospective defendant has joined in a civil conspiracy to defame and deprive Councilman Donald Frazier of his rights as an elected official and citizen of Maryland and of the United States of America, through the dates and times listed above and other facts to be proven showing malice and procedural violations in order to advance a scheme and practice and custom to violate his free speech and other statutory and constitutional rights and remove him from office. For the foregoing reasons and for the matters related and similar pursuant to the stated claims and potential additional claims, and reserving the right to revise and amend the facts, some of which are yet unknown and to be discovered, Councilman Frazier asserts this notice of claim under the Local Government Tort's Claim Act. Therefore, on behalf of Councilman Donald Frazier, we demand the City of Tawnytown cease its illegal actions of censuring and defaming him for his lawful service to the people of Tawnytown. Reverse its unlawful censures, retract its false and defamatory statements, and provide a written apology and damages and attorney's fees to Councilman Frazier in the amount of $5 million for damages and $10,000 in attorney's fees and costs. This demand is open until 12:01 a.m. July 28th, 2017, at which time it will be withdrawn. Very truly yours, Signed, Daniel L. Cox.
Well, as you know, we don't discuss pending claims against the city in a public meeting. However, I, in an effort to be as transparent as possible, I wanted the public to be aware of the potential for further lawsuits, grandstanding, and drama. All this may be on the horizon again, once again. We will take public comment at the proper time on the agenda, but before we get to that, let's move into a review of the minutes. Does anyone have any questions or comments or additions or corrections on the minutes? Either July 5th or July 10th, I'm hearing nothing, we will have those ready for approval The next item is a reception of a delegation which is not here, so we will skip over that and I guess reschedule that at some future point. And we'll move into the portion of the program that requires -- that allows public comment on non-agenda items, items that do not appear on the agenda. Because the crowd is so large, please hold your comments to -- in order to hear as many people as possible, let's hold our comments to two minutes tonight. When you come to the podium to make your comments, make sure you identify who you are and where you live. So who's first?
Barbara Cook, 314 Clubside Drive. I'm here today to talk about our boys in blue. I'm talking about the Tawnytown boys in blue, our police officers. I'm not here to criticize, I'm here to offer a change. Up until now, I haven't seen them in blue and do they even own any blues. I've had three interfaces with the police and it's been very pleasant. To me, blue means to provide and protect. I have five -- listed five times, I think it would be good to see them in blue. Number one, when going into the school to talk with children. Number two, directing traffics such as parades. Number three, attending civic affairs like the Lions Club and so forth. And number four, attending funerals. And number five, attending city council meetings. Blue tells me I am here to provide civic order and to protect the council rules. Black tells me we are divided, us against you. I would appreciate a response to this and have it be a public response. It does not have to be tonight, and I won't be here next Monday.
Well, thank you, Ms. Cook. Just to ask the question, do our police officers have any type of dress uniform or is this just the standard issue uniform is what we wear?
You're talking a blue uniform or a black?
Blue.
We don't have blue together.
Okay. Well, thank you. We'll certainly discuss that and come back with a response.
Mr. Mayor, oftentimes, the police are called the men in blue. It's just a generic term for law enforcement officers.
That's right. Ours happen to be in black, but that's the point, I guess, of Ms. Cook's presentation. Okay. Anyone else here to make a comment?
I'm Ferry Flickinger, 12 Banker Terrace, Tawnytown. I'm sorry I'm late. Are we on the public comment for non-agenda?
Yes.
I would like to know if there could be a showing of how much has been spent over the last 11 or 12 months on this lawsuit. This is our tax money.
Do we have any figures?
We have, it's $5,000 on -- no, I'm sorry, it's $8,000 without counting the last two months of the fiscal year.
Well, maybe it would be good to try to, from beginning to end, to try to get a number that we can relate to for this last episode that we went through.
I, yes, I have set up a project and it's tracking it. All bills are put in with that tracking number. Jay's invoices, time spent, it's all going on there. So it's $8,000 without, let's see, May and June. So those two, your financial records tonight are at a close balance of, for June, let's see.
Rather than try to pick them out of the financial records, is there any?
Well, no, they can't, but not yet. This is for, what we have for tonight here is from 6:01 through 6:30.
So we don't have the full picture yet?
Not yet.
Mr. Mayor, the newspaper, the town had given the newspaper information that they'd spent $5,000, but based on the information I have, the town spent more than that because of the amount of work that our bench law suit did to try to frustrate this.
I think the $5,000 was a, was a, an estimate given at the, at the time the question was asked. I don't think there's any detail or investigation.
I think a lot of other time was spent by the attorney and the town manager also.
So I think if we could try to come up with that number, I think everybody would be interested.
Yes, that's going to take time for the process to move through. I think Jay, you haven't submitted those things yet.
Who else would like to make a comment?
Carl, excuse me, Carl Eball, 320 Roberts Mill. Tonight's been interesting, it certainly has, this business, brought to us by the cartel that was going to lower our water rates by half. I kind of remember they were going to clean up the Chinese restaurant here on the square, and who knows how many other things. What they think they're doing is trying to bankrupt the town. People, if you realize something, if this happens, if it would be found in their favor, where are the water rates going to go? They're going to go up. Where are the tax rates going to go? They're going to go up. And people are going to be sick and tired of this town, and they won't be leaving, they won't be moving because of water rates.
Well, I'm not guilty of violating attorney-client privilege.
I have to untalk them.
I am not guilty.
All right. Gail, you had your hand up next, I think.
Gail Wilson, York Street, Tawnytown, Maryland. With all due respect, Mr. Frazier, and at the risk of being in the middle of a lawsuit, which I don't want to be, I have some questions. With reference to your, to the letter from your attorneys, you wish the town to apologize, to retract these censures, and to pay you $5 million. Now, let me ask you a question. If the town were to pay you $5 million, would that money come out of the surplus fund that they have, which is set aside for their next year's budget? Or would the town have to raise taxes? Would the town have to dismiss its police force, cut services, et cetera? In other words, if the town were to have to pay you that $5 million, how do you propose the town pay for that? You know very well that this is not a wealthy town. You know very well that most of us in this town are working-class people. You know very well that this town does not have the finances to pay that amount of money. Furthermore, you were elected on the promise to serve us, to do your very best for us, and I would very much appreciate it if you would continue, if you would do that. And, you know, I know that you have some very good ideas. I know also that you can be very disruptive, but I want you to know that I think you would really hurt our town.
Thank you, Gail.
I just, I'm trying to get the town to stop misbehaving, that's all.
All right, Catherine, you're next.
Catherine Adelaide, 9 Cortlandt Street. It is customary to let people finish their sentences, so I'm glad you let her do that. Talk about grandstanding, Mr. Mayor. You certainly used your position once again. You seem to have learned nothing from this lawsuit to do a grandstand right at the beginning of this meeting. It is sexist of you to call Councilman Frazier's wife. Her name is Robin Frazier. We don't just refer to people as a wife anymore. Her name is Robin Frazier, and she was the plaintiff, and she is a citizen of this town, even though she's married to a councilman, just like all of your spouses who have them are still citizens of this town. And you need to be careful about your use of grandstanding and defaming Mrs. Robin Frazier, or you could also be subject to a lawsuit. That said, you did misrepresent. I was there at the end and you were not, and I took exact notes about what that judge said. First of all, the charter says that you must obey the Open Meetings Act. You must obey the Open Meetings Act. That's in our town charter. The Circuit Court Judge Lawrence Daniels found on August 1st, four things, four violations. There was no notice of the alleged open meeting, which we still dispute. There was no statement by you, the presiding officer, during that alleged open meeting, which we dispute. There were no minutes for that open meeting. And finally, there was a mistake in the closed meeting minutes. They were incomplete because you were not named in that. So those were four violations that occurred. They were ruled on from the bench orally by the judge. So it seems to me, and I hope that one of you will make, to put this on the agenda for Monday, it seems that because of those alleged violations, four of you are now up for a censure also.
Thank you, Catherine. I appreciate your lesson in political correctness and disagree completely with everything you said, so there you go. Sit down.
Marvin Flickinger, 8 East Ballroom Street, Tawnytown. You keep referring to the judge saying that you violated the openness. Well, no doubt you did, but I think it's so frivolous that he knew that even if they were invited into this open meeting, the meeting was only going to last, you probably could have done it in a minute, so it wouldn't have amounted a darn if they were there. They couldn't have talked, they couldn't have affected it anyway, and I think the judge knew that. It was a warning, yes, based on a violation, but it's no different than you going down the road, going two miles over the speed limit, and the cop stopped, you're guilty. But he's going to give you a warning, and that's about the way I view this thing. The judge gave you a warning because it's so frivolous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Robin Frazier. One of the things that happened at the trial, when you were on the stand, we talked about that record of meeting and how there's an updated one that the attorney general has that will help you to keep all of the information that you should take note of. And when I went on the website to make a copy for you, they've actually updated it again. So I would just like to encourage you, you said you would take a look at it. You know, it walks through the time, the date, the location, who was there, how the vote went. It actually has the law written here, so you can make sure you've got the right part of the law of why you can have a closed meeting, so that you can record that in here. And then it has the presiding officer signing, so that we know for sure who was the presiding officer, and that somebody vouches for the information that's on the form. And there's a couple of things not on here that I think still should be, and one of those that's important is a record of the vote to close the meeting, to adjourn. So I added that to here because it says to record all the votes, but it doesn't specifically say adjournment, but I think it's a good idea to have the time that you adjourned and the record of the vote of who adjourned, because in a closed meeting, you're only supposed to be talking about certain subjects. So if the meeting went for five hours on a subject that probably would only take half an hour, that would help people to know you were off topic. But the other thing is, if you don't adjourn your meeting, then theoretically, you're still open, so you need to adjourn your meeting. So I'd just like to give that to you and encourage you to take an, to update your form because it'll help you to keep those closed meetings on track.
Anyone else care to make a comment? Very well, we'll move into the agenda. I begin by asking the council if they have any conflicts of interest with any agenda items this evening.
Yes, sir.
No.
No one does, so we'll move on. For an induction, on Monday night, we have no resolutions or ordinances, but we do have the adoption of Resolution 2017 S10, the water allocation for August. Anyone have a -- Anyone have a question on the water allocation resolution?
Just a real quick question. Is there a certain minimum that we need before we add it to this list? I was looking for EVAPCO to be on here, I was looking for grassroots to have been on here, or any of those. Is there a?
As we said, in September, we're going to update that, hopefully. So, and we're putting, once the public works agreements get approved by you, then they'll be on there. So it's on here, but it's, we have extra that's not shown, I guess is the.
Okay. Very good.
All right, that will be up for approval. Ordinance 11-2017, it's fiscal year 2017, budget amendment. And maybe you can explain these latest series of budget amendments. We had a few last month, and now we have some more this month. Can you just share with us what we're approving here?
Which one are you talking about?
2017, June 11, 2017.
Oh, the budget amendment?
Yes.
Well, that's because one of our vehicles, police vehicles, came in on June 25th, which puts it in the last fiscal year.
I see.
So we're just moving money from one budget to another.
Is 12 like that also? 12-17?
Well, yes. One is the amendment to put the money in the budget, and the other one is to amend the budget to take the money out.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on that?
Just, the ordinance 11 will be like to put it in, and ordinance 12 to take it out, right? That's why there's two of those?
Well, there's two fiscal years.
Oh, two fiscal years, okay, thank you.
All right. Let's move into the city manager's report. Henry, what do you have for us this evening?
Well, this week, I received the resignation of our treasurer, Bobby Joe. She will be leaving us on the 23rd of this month. She's taken a job with the county government. And so what I, the steps that I've taken already, is I got Rager Lehman to come in, because we're still in a audit situation, so we're going to need help.
Do we need any kind of council action to implement that, or is that a management decision that we can make?
Well, it's not going, if it exceeds the 20, or 10,000, then the answer is probably yes. But at this time, I don't know.
Okay. What else, Louis?
Okay. Well, if you recall, several years ago, we talked about dedicating the money that we receive in growth to several different categories. And what we need to do, and it's probably, I suggest to do this after the audits, so we have a better feel for the dollars, is we need to do that. We have, we've not done that. You know, as well as on the accounts, you've got revenue and expenditures. We need to put some of that money that we see coming in over there, in the dedication of, it's sort of like the restricted funds for Parks and Rec. It would work the same way. So I would suggest that we meet sometime, you know, after October, because we have to have our audit in by the end of October. And the other thing that I would, at that same meeting, would be to do the review, the capital projects. And that's going to take some time.
So a special meeting would be in order?
Yes.
All right.
And that's really all I have.
Questions for Henry?
Just one quick thing. So the hiring of the specialist from Rager Lehman is to ensure that we have a smooth transition into the?
Continuity.
Okay. Thank you.
Have we thought about our approach for recruiting a new treasurer?
Well, we're going to put out advertising, we're going to advertise in the local papers, and then probably we'll do it down in Frederick, and then we'll do the MML.
Okay. All right. Any question on any of the departmental reports? Let's move into the legal report. What do you have for us?
I have a bunch of stuff for us tonight. And it's going to be all dry legal stuff, so here we go. First one deals with public works agreements, and the first subject of that is the public works agreement format. You recall at the last meeting, the staff was challenged to become, I use the word innovative, in dealing with some requests that you heard from the Meads Crossing folks about how we could bring our public works agreements up to modern practices. And as we told you, it was going to be a chore to do, and we were somewhat resistant, because nobody likes change, despite what everybody says. So we put pencil to paper, and we came up with some solutions. And after looking at these solutions, now we kind of like it. We kind of like this, as maybe this is part of the template moving forward for other public works agreements. We're not completely there, we're there as far as what Meads Crossing needs, but we think we, now that we're in the spirit, we may make some more changes. So what you have in front of you that was in the package is a redlined version of the Meads Crossing Public Works Agreement. And there's several things in there that were just minor changes, that really aren't worth discussing, because they were made, because they needed to be made. But the theory of the big change to the public works agreement is what I wanted to get your blessing on and explain to you tonight. As you know, a public works agreement is executed by the developer in favor of the city, and it outlines what they need to do to build their development, so bricks-and-mortar type things. And it also requires them to post a surety, to make sure these things get done. So in the past, they would have a contract bid for what it would take to build their development. Now, I'm not talking about the houses, I'm talking about the public improvements, the roads, sewer, the water, storm drain, those things. They would give us that information of how much it would cost to do, and we would take a bond for that, or a letter of credit, and add 10% on that. And that was to ensure that if they stopped, or they walked away, we could go after that surety and take that money, and then can finish the project. And that's the way it worked, and that was good for us in the early 2000s. Now, everybody's gone away from letters of credit, because letters of credit are very expensive to get from financial institutions after the financial crisis, and they've gone to bonds. And bonds are basically insurance policies in favor of the city. So if the city would have to collect a bond, we would be going to an insurance company, more or less, and telling them, you owe us money, and it would be like going for an insurance claim. And that's not always the easiest thing to do. So what we did was, we worked out an arrangement where maybe we can address the bonding amount, the surety amount. And it would go something like this. The first thing a developer does when they build their site is they grade the site, okay? So they bring in their equipment, they move dirt from one side of the site to the other, and they do that all over. And to do that, they need to get a grading permit. And in the instant example here, their cost is probably about $600,000, $700,000 of what they're going to pay their contractor to do that. So we use the worst-case scenario. If they stopped doing that work the day after they started, what would the city do, and why would it do it? And the first thing is, well, we wouldn't take $700,000 and finish paying the contractor to finish grading the site. Why would we grade the site at all? It's not our property, we're not going to build houses. The city's obligation, under its code and under the state law, is to stabilize the site, to make sure that grass is planted, that it's stabilized, so you don't have erosion and runoff. And that has nothing to do, or has no relation, to the cost of doing the grading. It's a different cost altogether. So we came up with the idea that said, how much would it cost on a per-acre basis to grade and seed the area that would be disturbed? And we came up with a price of about $1,500 an acre, is what that would cost. So in reality, if they disturbed 10 acres of land, it would cost us $1,500 times 10 to pay somebody to go out there and do that. So what we came up with was, they would need to post a surety for that formula that I just talked to you about. And instead of posting a bond, which I just told you is difficult to get, they would have to post a letter of credit. And a letter of credit is basically an irrevocable bank account from a bank that's pledged to the city's name, so that if we say they're in default, we go to the bank and say, give us the money, and we use that money to deal with it. It's a very quick process, within the terms of weeks, as opposed to an insurance claim, which takes months to deal with. So we felt that is probably an improvement that we want to have going forward for all public works agreements, because it really puts us in the driver's seat. That helped them, that met one of their requirements. Then the next issue would be, when does the city need the rest of the surety? When do we need that big money? Remember, we were talking about $8 million. When do we need the surety for that? And we came up with, well, we only need that when the public is affected. And so the public is affected in three ways. One, if somebody buys a lot out there, meaning they bought a raw piece of land from them, now we have a public member, a third party. The second way it would be affected would be if somebody came and they wanted a building permit. Once you have a building permit, you're going to have a buyer for the house, again, you have a third party that we need to protect. And the third example would be if they connect their utilities, so the water and the sewer lines, to our existing utility. So give you an example. If they go out there in the middle of their field, and follow their plans, and put in lots of water lines, which we're inspecting, and lots of sewer lines, and we have no security, and they stop, what is it to the city? We're not going to finish the development, we're not going to sell houses, it's water and sewer lines in somebody's field at that point in time. It's the bank's problem. But if they connect it to the city's lines, well, we do have an interest. If they connect it to a building lot that they've sold, we have an interest. And if they say they're going to build a house, a building permit, we have an interest. So we came up with, and you'll see in the public works agreement, that if they apply for any building permits, other than model homes, that triggers the requirement to post all the bonds. And those bonds would be the full amount that was in the public works agreement, less any work that they've done to that point. And they said that that's really something they can live with, and the more we think about it, it's something that we can live with, because we don't need $8 million on day one. We only need a lesser amount on day one, we go forward from there. We made no changes to the releases, okay? So there's nothing changed as far as when do we release the money, when do we accept the roads and sewers, none of that, that's all as it was, so there's no need to talk about that. The only thing is, we would release that letter of credit for grading when the grading's complete. So that's the theory, and so then there's obvious questions. People say, well, how do we know they're doing the work right? That's already in the agreement. There's an inspection provision in there where we hire an inspector, like a company, and they pay the bills for the inspection that goes on. So everything that gets done out there is done under an inspector's eye, it's done, it's supposed to be correct, so we're making sure it's done. And that's basically it. That's what this would do. Is there any questions that I can answer?
I have two, two questions. First of all, on page four, when you were talking about grading in the land, what was it that made you guys say two-thirds is the appropriate amount of the distributed area of the project? What made you say that two-thirds is appropriate for this?
Well, it was very grade-schoolish. We said, there's really no way they're going to have 100%, in their case, 80 acres, all uncovered at the same time. Because state law requires that if you stop working the land, we'll call it, and within two weeks, it has to be seeded. So we already know that if they stop working an area over here, they're going to have to seed it, if they're not going to be disturbing it within two weeks. And that's already part of the law. So we said, they're not going to grade 80 acres and leave that open. And we said, well, if you take half the dirt and move it over to here, maybe that's half. And we didn't like half, right? We want better odds than 50/50, so we came up with two-thirds. And that's, that was basically how it came about.
Makes sense. And I've got one more question, if that's okay? On the next page, on page five, talking about the different items of work, I noticed that a number of them have been eliminated from the list.
Yes.
Or that they've been rearranged. I mean, what was, I mean, is it, you know, this is being tailored specifically for this project, or is that this is just like the standard practice that we'll have going forward?
We'll probably go forward with this, and so let's use page five, if you want to turn to it. At the outset, if you add all those numbers up, they don't add up to the bottom, okay? Because what we did was, we redlined the things that came out, we didn't recalculate. So the number now is closer to 6 million than 8 million, just so you know out front. Well, if you start at the top, item D is soil erosion and sediment control, and item E is grading and stabilization. Those numbers are basically what I've been referring to as grading. So they're going to put, they're not going to need to put that up at all, they're going to be putting the letter of credit for the cover in place of that. Landscaping, when you come down to the H, is a bond that's held by the county. Sometimes we hold it on projects, sometimes we don't, meaning that we hold the county's bond, we're the ones that actually hold the bond that's due the county. But on this project, because of the size, that's going to be posted directly with the county, they enforce landscaping, we don't. So that's out. You come down to surveying, and that was quite a sizable number, I mean, it was in, you know, the five-digit range of numbers. And we talked about, why would we need to bond surveying? Because they're going to survey everything out, and our inspector's going to be there to watch it, and if they stop building, why would we care whether we're going to survey individual lots off? We're not going to be doing site surveys to build houses, so there's no need for surveying. You go down to driveway aprons, 11. A driveway apron is basically the sidewalk, you understand what that is, where the concave portion of the sidewalk, so you can drive your car up onto the, onto your driveway. That is part of the sidewalk issue, okay? So sidewalks are already talking about there. And there's no need for us to hold a guarantee in addition, because that part, the driveway apron, has to be constructed and completed before we sign off on the UNO. So if you look at it practically, if they go to sell a house, they get a building permit, they have a buyer, the buyer wants to move in, they have to have everything done, including the driveway apron. So instead of having money for it, we have the ultimate power of saying, we're not going to sign the UNO unless the driveway apron's in. So there's no need for money on that at the point in time. And then signage, there's language in the agreement that talks about street signs, and that was a low number, but the idea is, we don't know what signs we're going to have right now. You would think we would, but we don't, because the roads get built first, and then the police department goes out and sees which ones, which are going to put the stop signs where, and where the speed limit signs are going to go. So that was always just an estimate, and there's a paragraph in the public works agreement that says, they have to put up the signs that we dictate they have to put up. So why do we need, you know, pay a surety for that? And that would be that. And then if you go a couple pages later, everything I just mentioned is deleted from the next line, because you wouldn't need a maintenance obligation on things we didn't hold a bond for.
No, that makes sense. And you're saying this is indicative of the future of development?
We haven't reached consensus of whether we say we love this going forward, but we don't hate it, but the consent, the warning I got was, we may want to even do more. So this isn't going to be the standard, because we may make changes that are even more favorable, but we haven't gotten to that point yet.
So it's a public works agreement, that's a public works in progress?
That's, that's what it is. We're going to talk about two more tonight, and we'll, we'll talk about that in a second.
Why is the, why had the railroad crossing been removed?
It, it didn't, it just got slid, it, when you do track changes, it didn't. If you see the 195, 195,000 is underneath. When you actually see the final document, the railroad crossing will move to the margin, and that'll pop up in front of it.
Got you. All right.
The other concern, if I follow up, we discussed this with the mayor, because, you know, the mayor is very concerned about making any hasty changes that would put the city at risk. He's made that very clear, he made it clear to everyone here, but he made it clear to the developers, and the developers said to the mayor that if this is not something that's going to get your blessing, they don't want it to be rammed down anybody's throat. And so the discussion became, what happens if a builder, and I want to take a couple minutes to get the point out, because, you know, this is, was important to the mayor, what happens if a builder defaults? So you got to get everybody's point here. You got the developer, who is the people that own the land, that put the roads in, the water and sewer in, they're developers. They sell finished lots, they sell the lots that have all these things on it, to a builder, and the builder is the one that builds the houses. Okay, so they're separate entities. And the developer has a contract with the builder, and it usually goes with, you have to buy so many lots at so many period of time, over so many years. And you have to put a deposit up. And the builder builds, and if they find out they're not getting the saturation, not getting the sales they want, they have a provision where they're going to say, we're done, we're not building anymore, keep our deposit, or do whatever, but we're out. That in no way alters the developer's arrangement with the city under this, okay? That is between them, you know, I'm telling you how it works, but it doesn't involve us. And people say, well, you know, what does that mean? A new builder could come in. Yeah, a new builder could come in, and they would be required to build the houses to the same architectural guidelines that we've already approved, if they wanted any changes. If they wanted any changes, they'd come to the planning commission and go through that process. And so that sounds like a little scary, but we've been through that. And the example is Carol Vista. The first three phases of Carol Vista were built by Polte, and then the fourth phase, Polte did not want to do, so they walked away and said, "We're not building the last phase." They redid the last phase, and they, I believe they had two different builders come in, and the builders came in with their models and showed to planning commission. And if I hadn't told you and you weren't aware, you probably wouldn't have known the difference out there. So, it happens, but it doesn't put the city at risk. As long as the city maintains what they want, you get what you want. Well, and if the developer, I didn't, the city manager was saying, "What if the developer defaults?" If the developer defaults after they posted the bond, we have the money to go ahead and, I mean, it'd be a mess, but we have the money to do that. If they default before they post the bond, as I told you, there's no public impact. So, they have water and sewer lines out there, and their bank's probably really upset, but the city, the city is just looking at it as a property that needs to be developed again. So...
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up question? Um, my understanding was that when they spoke here before, that they requested a reduction based on the fact that we just covered phase one, which would lower their obligation. What you have here, um, I wasn't sure whether that was the actual effect of it. You went through point by point. How, why should they have to bond the later phases that are in the out years than just the phase one? We're interested in getting started and getting phase one. So, isn't that what's happening here tonight?
Um, yes, but it all, the discussion has only ever been with phase one. They only have approval from the planning commission to build phase one. They don't have plans for anything beyond phase one. So, we are not, we are not bonding anything beyond phase one, with the exception of grading, because grading is site-wide. We're not bonding that. We're doing the letter of credit thing.
So the bonding of phase one is 8.104 million dollars right now?
Well...
And they're requesting what?
That the number on the bottom, as I said, 8.1 is not the total of that. You have to re-total it. It's down to six million or so at that point. And they're not requesting, there's no other request. That's, that's what will happen.
I thought I remembered, when you were here before, you requested a reduction in this amount.
No. Well, when they were here before, they talked about the 8.1 million dollars being posted on day one. And so what I just explained to you was that some of those numbers don't need to be included, and some of them can be handled a different way, so that they would be bought, bought with a letter of credit on day one, and the bonds would happen at building permit time. So it would be, in rough numbers, if you added this out, it would be a letter of credit maybe of about $80,000. And then, when they get a building permit, it would be a bond of about $600,000, or $6 million minus any work that they performed, plus 10% of the whole. That would be the formula.
So is something going to be for consideration on Monday regarding this?
I don't think we're ready for it.
It's just being considered Monday.
Okay.
Is that correct?
It, this is, this is done, as far as we're concerned. I mean, we, we would have to nicely format it, but the theory, if you want to change the theory, and I, I'm going to distill it down to very simple, letter of credit for grading issues and bonding at building permit time. If you're good with that, this agreement does it. We would go ahead and put our, our final agreement together with them and be done. There are things they still have to submit to us that would change some of the numbers, but not anything that would need to come to you. The $1,500 I used, example, that was a number that they gave us that was tentative. It wasn't a bid that we can use, those kind of things.
Well, and that's why we, we shouldn't be getting hung up on those numbers as much as just making sure that everything is accounted for, and the liability is the key part here.
Right. So we're, this would be ready to go if you said on Monday, "We're okay with this new concept." And the vote you would take would be to approve the new concept for Meads Crossing. It wouldn't be for the things I'm going to talk about next.
You have reluctance about that?
No, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, the risk to the city is at the very beginning, and...
And even then, it's minimized.
Well, yeah, because what we're, what I insisted on the, the letter of credit was because, you, if it was a bond, you know, bonds don't work the same way as letters of credit. You know, you're, it's like an insurance policy. You're going to be in, in debate with the bond account, you know, who's holding the bond. Whereas letter of credit, you have the right to say, "Yeah, I want the money." And the fact is, is that, you know, there is that requirement that, you know, it should, they default, we got to do the great, finish the grading seeding within two weeks.
Okay. I mean, I got two other, I got a couple other things yet, so I will speed it up for you. The next ones, there are two other public works agreements that you have laid out on the counter for you tonight. Typically, the way the policy we've had in the past is, we work out the public works agreement. If it happens between meetings, we go ahead and execute the public works agreement, and then you all ratify it later because it follows a standard format. And that's, Meads Crossing does not follow a standard format, so that's why the whole special treatment of that. But the two you have in front of you now do follow our old format. Okay, so they do not do any of the stuff I just said for Meads Crossing. And the one is for the Avapco expansion, which is the big building, and the other is for the George's Bed and Breakfast, which is right around the corner here. Neither of those have planning commission approval yet. They may have it at the end of this month, but we wanted to be proactive, since we're having the meeting, get this in front of you to see whether or not it's a problem. You'll notice if you read through there, there is a lot of intentionally omitted. And what we're doing, and what we've always done, is instead of redoing the agreement, we use the form agreement and put intentionally omitted for things that don't apply. That way, it saves us trouble of saying, "What was that? How did that change?", for example. So, on Monday night, if you'd approve, uh, the Avapco expansion, that would allow us to, uh, go ahead and get them finished, because we believe that they're going to want their U and O before September, and you may not be meeting again before that happens, and we don't want any holdups, is what we told them. Along with that is an agreement that you have called Inspection and Maintenance Agreement of Stormwater Facilities. That is a standard agreement that is required under our stormwater, um, management orders. Avapco would have to sign that. So that's why you have it, because it goes with their public works agreement. And the George's Bed and Breakfast, the only reason they're even doing any of this is because they're going to be extending a water main down Riffle's Alley, I believe, from the parking lot to the back of their property where they want to connect. And they're going to do it because the city talked to them, instead of just doing a service line connecting to, for them, they're actually going to extend the city main down. And the city, as they can see in there, will provide the materials because it's going to be a main, including a fire hydrant for the parking lot. At least, that's the tentative plan. Maybe the fire hydrant may not happen, but that was the tentative plan, because there's no fire hydrants at all in the parking lot area. So, we need an agreement that talks about what I just told you. So that's what. So on Monday, if you decide you want to do these, you take a vote on each one, and you'd be approving each one. My last one, luckily enough, is amended. You can see, number two is financial procedures improvement. We had a meeting last month, based on the follow-up with the treasurer, to talk about how we can clean up some financial procedures. And, um, we had a very good meeting. Basically, there are certain code provisions and certain charter provisions that just need to be clarified, and that's one part of the deal. The second part of the deal is how you all are presented financial information. And to give you the example, tonight, under new business, like every other meeting, you have new business monthly financial report. That's really not your monthly financial report. I mean, it says it is, you think it is, but it is not, because it's prepared, it was prepared last week before the end of the month numbers were done. So you don't have July's real monthly financial report there. You have as good as it can get, which is why, you know, it's hard to rely on those things. The second thing you have is the accounts payable. Every month, you take a vote to say, "Okay, are we going to pay the bills?" Nowhere in the charter, nowhere in the code does it say you approve the financial reports or the accounts payable. If you guys didn't vote on doing that, guess what? Those bills were paid already. Those are July's bills that were paid by the time you see it in August. So, to be completely transparent, we need to kind of redo how financial information is presented to you, so that you don't believe that you're looking at a monthly report, and you don't believe that you're actually approving or paying the bills or authorizing that, because that's not the way the government's set up.
I think we know that.
Well...
We know that, because the date of the checks is on here. Uh, it just is the transparency about what has happened. I think we all know that.
But I think the council's just, I think he's just explaining it for the benefit of the audience, for everybody to, to be more aware of what we're discussing.
Yeah, but you, we're not fooled by it. I'm, I'm very aware of it. I asked a lot of questions when first elected about that. If we would fail to approve these, these bills are paid already.
Right. So there's no need to approve financial reports?
It is a need to approve that. I think so. Because the, in, in the charter, the, Mr. Mayor, the, the council has the authority to allocate in budget monies. And that's why we do that. It's not something that should be omitted from our procedures or agenda.
We can debate that when we have the procedure in front of you, but the point is...
Are you suggesting we omit it? I thought you just said that.
You are not, when you vote on this, approving the monthly financial report.
No, can you answer my question?
Yeah, I'm saying that...
Is our town attorney suggesting we omit the voting on this, this budgetary matters?
Well, these aren't budgetary items, and what I'm telling you is that when you say you are voting on a monthly financial report and you're voting to approve it, you're not really doing that at all.
I'm saying, that's your advice to us, that's bad legal advice.
I've heard that a lot of times from you.
Because the charter allocates, says the council allocates funds.
However, if I could finish, we don't have the policy...
We, we're halfway through the explanation.
I just want to stop that right there, because we're not going to remove that from the action.
You may not stop it.
Let's get the full explanation before we make any decisions at all. Continue, please.
So, as we, we're winding up the meeting with the treasurer, and her concern that we do not present monthly financial reports as if somebody believed this is a monthly financial report, and they take it and they rely upon it because you voted upon it, she has concerns because it would need to be amended because it's not a complete picture of the monthly finances. So, we were talking about ways we could redo this and ways we can improve this to create more transparency, not less, and then she tendered her resignation. So, the city manager, I talked to him about, "What do we do?", and we thought that it's best if we just put things on hold until we get a new treasurer in, because we don't want to come up with policies that the new treasurer might be better able to, to figure it out. So, that's why you saw this on here, was before her resignation was tendered, and it'll probably be dormant again until we have a new treasurer.
I think if, for purposes of the docket, we need to explain that these are, um, estimated figures through the end of the month or something, some, some type of statement like that, so it's perfectly clear to every member that, that's voting on the numbers that they have in their packet, what they're actually voting on.
In, in many other municipalities, what they do is they don't present it in the format that you have, because most people would not be able to understand a 20-page financial report without flipping. What they do is they create a report, just like if you had, obviously, we don't use like Quicken, but just if you had like Quicken and you hit end of month report, it'll present a balance sheet, like one or two pages, that shows you how it relates to the budget in one format. You're used to seeing that when you look at your audit report, something you rely on because it's an outsider that does it. And they have like a one-page format that says, "Here's the budget categories, and here's what you spent, and here's the variance." And it's very easy to match that one for one. Whereas, if you were going to try to match what you have here, that's 20-some pages long, you wouldn't be able to do it from one month to the next. And that's the continuity that you have, is you need to be able to build like a quarterly report to a half-a-year report, so that when you get to the end of the year, remember, this is where this started. You get to the end of the year and you wonder, "Why do we have to have a budget amendment? Because the police cars came in the wrong day." You'll be able to see on the report, "We still have money left in the police car budget. It hasn't been spent. That's why we're doing certain things." You can't follow that in this right now.
Well, it's a good goal to try to strive to reach.
And that's all I have.
Well, Mr. Mayor, before we leave that topic, I just want to go on record as being opposed to any change of the format at the town. Since you determined the agenda, we took, we take votes on this financial report, this financial report monthly, and I think that's very appropriate because of the way the budget is done and released. And I would, I would be much chagrined to find any change in that procedure.
I couldn't agree with you more, but at the same token, if more transparency and, transparency and clarity could come before us, we'd all be better off.
I agree with that.
Because the, the, again, the, the, the 20-page report is a little bit overwhelming.
I love looking at it. I think it's ma- major part of my, um, job as, as a, um, as a city councilman to go over these expenditures, make sure things are on track with the budget.
I think that's important, too. But regardless, let's, let's, um, see if we can present the same information in a more readable form, more understandable form. I guess that's what we're trying to do.
I think it would be more accurate information was...
Most places, that's customary. They give you like pie charts, they show you percentages, so it's easily digestible.
I want to see individual transactions like we see them today.
That, that sounds like it could be a great improvement. But we're not doing anything right now.
So you get a new person on board?
I want to see individual tracks, uh, transactions like we see it now. It's check numbers and dates, and then we can compare that with budget items. There's nothing wrong with the, this procedure. If you can, if you can tweak the, the calendar year or give us more data, we, but don't omit the key substance of what a councilman's supposed to do.
We'll have, we'll have all that accounted for. All right, any questions further for Jay? All right, moving into some new business. Speaking of the monthly financial report, does anybody have any questions on it? The tentative monthly financial report, or the estimated monthly financial report, or however you want to refer to it?
There's two reports we get, and so, um, I often have objected to the wrong one in, uh, two years on the last.
Now, there's, there's, there's two documents, or there are two sets of documents. There's one has to do with the financial reports, and that's the budgeting information. And then there's accounts payable, there are the checks we write. So that's the number two items. Anyone have any questions on the checks we write? The accounts payable. They're all listed there for you.
Questions?
All right, and the third item will be the, um, ratification of the auditing services. Our auditor is the same individual, but she switched companies. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So we have to ratify her new, uh, LLC or whatever it is. Anybody have any questions on that?
I'd say we've been satisfied with her performance in the past.
Okay, well, it's time for public comment on agenda items. I'm sorry, Jim.
I'm sorry, and, and maybe this is the wrong place to have brought it up. I guess I just want to bring up briefly the, the trash collection issue. I had a couple citizens who did ask me if we wouldn't mind bringing up, you know, certain issues that have been had over the course of the last two weeks. And, you know, to know that, that we are working on having them addressed, and to know that the company's working on having them addressed. And so I guess we're looking for reassurance that this is occurring.
We're in constant contact with them.
And I, I guess my question is, and, and anybody feel free to disagree, um, you, you know, at what point do we have to go to these guys and say, you know, "You're just not performing satisfactorily, and we either need you to step up your game, or we're going to have to question your ability to provide the service?"
What would be done typically is a notice, what's called a notice to cure. In other words, you're putting them on notice, and if they don't fix it by a certain time, then, you know, we're going to break the contract.
There hasn't been any such notice at this time? Okay.
I guess the, the real issue is that we, we've contracted for a service that, that we expect to be rendered, and if it's not rendered, then that, then, then they would be in breach of that contract. So, we would have some legal recourse if, if things didn't improve. But somehow, we need to make them understand that it's been 30 days, and 30 days in a week, it's, it's time to figure it out, how to pick up the trash.
Yeah, we're having the same problems. I know we're in constant contact, we're just not seeing any improvement to what's going on.
Well, I mean, I did talk to Kevin via email today, and he said he's been keeping track, and there is an improvement, albeit slowly, but that, looking back to when we first had queues originally, that they experienced the same issues their first, you know, several months, too. So, I think it's only fair to give them a chance to fix their issues, because honestly, I've had the same people come to me, you know, yes, there have been some complaints about the new ones, but there were also quieter complaints about the last one, you know. I know personally, I lost a trash.
You need to give somebody a, a chance to do their job.
Right, as long as they're willing to fix the issues.
Well, and that's, that's all we're looking for, is willing to fix the issues.
The only question I have is why they pick up Gail's trash and they'll pick up mine?
They don't like your trash.
But anyway.
Thank you, Henry.
That, that's, that's an issue that we will certainly continue to work on. Anything else before we go into public comment? All right, now we'll have, entertain public comment.
I do have one item, if I might ask, ask quite. I read through this that was handed out tonight during the original comment period. There are four violations of the Open Meetings Act. Violation 8302, 305, 8306, and 8306, number 12. So, there are four violations. Both of the censures that I was given, I disagree that I was guilty of either one, the way I was charged, this sort of thing. It's just political mudslinging. So, this is an act of censure that was prepared for us tonight. And I'm going to make a motion on Monday that we censure the Councilman that knowingly
Councilman Frazier, we...
These laws on Monday.
We, we've already discussed items that weren't on the Council. So, now we'll move into public comment.
No, no, this is new business. I wanted to say that on Monday, I'm going to ask for a vote on that Councilman Bigliotti and Councilman Foster and Councilman Lance violated the law four ways, according to Judge Daniels. That's a big deal. I never violated the law, ever, as a City Councilman, regarding anything related to the city.
This, this is inappropriate. First of all, it's only your opinion. The Council found that you did violate the law. And the judge found that we didn't violate the law, except in two occasions. So, there, there's, you know, if, if, if the judge is lying, then the judge is lying.
He that knoweth to do right and doeth it not, to him it is sin.
But anyway. We're going to move on to public comment pertaining to agenda items now, if anyone cares to speak. Yeah, would you like to come back to the podium?
Mr. Mayor?
Just two minutes?
Oh, yeah, two minutes, because we've had a big crowd, and I just want to make sure.
Gail Wilson, York Street, Tony Towne, Maryland. With respect to the water allotments, Mr. Mayor, I request that you put in your report, in, in the town paper, that you put in the report that the reason our tax, our water sewer bill was cut 5% is due a lot to the fact that we receive these new water allotments, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You know how the, the logic goes. You get the water allotments, you get the water sewer hookup fees, goes to the water sewer fund, et cetera, then we have money to...
Now, I wouldn't hurt to explain that.
Could you put that in the report for the people?
We, we can do that, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to make a comment?
I have an idea of how to solve this Frazier Council situation through a mediator. And rather than stand up here, I'd like to send an email to the mayor, and if you agree, you could read it on Monday. And maybe we could settle this. We could have a sigh of relief, and you could get back to business.
Thank you.
Um, Priscilla Plummer, 22 Billy Mill Avenue. So, in regards to the Public Works Amendments for Meads Crossing, I just wanted some more clarification on that. So, the, essentially, I guess an amendment is not in particular to their plans or their plots or any of their housing. It's just basically how much money they need to have upfront to...
Right, they, the Public Works Agreement ensures and assures the city is protected when the development begins, so that, that no harm comes to the taxpayers through the development process. And the, the numbers that we've talked about are unique to each development and are calculated based on that development's design. So, that, that's what the Public Works Agreement is about. Do I, is there any explanation more than that?
There's no changes to the drawings, the plans, the pictures. This is just the text that carries that out.
Yeah, I just, I missed a couple of meetings in between, so I just wanted to make, I know there's been a lot of amendments in the last 10 years, so I just want to make sure that whatever was approved is still sitting as approved.
As of...
As of currently right now.
Couple of months ago, probably, whatever.
Okay, yeah, that's the last one. Okay, thank you.
I think, I, I feel like I, I want to clarify that those figures we're talking about are not income to the city.
No, not at all.
We're talking about a lot of figures, and, you know, for public works. That is not money we get. That's money that, if work is not performed, we can go after to finish that work. So, I don't want people to say, "Oh, they're getting $6 million from this thing. My water bills are going to go down." That's not what this is. This is not income for the city. This is a security that they're going to perform their job.
Insurance policy.
Right, I just wanted clarification on that, to make sure that there's no amendments to the plans that were promoted.
No, you're right on, I know.
Marvin?
Marvin Flickinger again. I urge the Council not to be intimidated by this threatened lawsuit. This group's 0 for 2 in hearings against the city, and I feel certain it would be 0 for 3 if you follow through and let it take its course. I attended those hearings, and I thought the town won, but when I read the paper today, I think the opposition still thinks they won. It's almost like Ivan Costella, "Who's on first"? Jay, I asked a question to you. Who, who pays the court costs when there's, when they lose?
The, they, everybody bears their own, and they pay their own court costs.
The town would pay theirs?
Yeah, we didn't have any, though.
We didn't have any?
Any court costs.
Yeah.
Right, we didn't pay any money to the court.
So, the losers would pay the court cost, in this case?
The, the winners would pay the court cost if they had it.
If they had.
So, said another way, the plaintiff pays to file the court case. And if they would have won, they would have been reimbursed for those court costs. But they lost, so...
So, do we recoup our $5,000 in any way?
No, those are the legal fees, and those aren't complete legal fees. But, yeah, those are different than court costs.
So, the city taxpayers stay on the bill between $5,000 and $6,000, and it's going up. And with all the annex that this group has caused the town over the last two years, I wouldn't be but surprised if there's not over $10,000, unless they're spent by the city. Maybe that will be reported in the press and itemized one of these days.
Mr. Flickinger, we never voted on the expenditure of that, of that money. It never came before the Council. That was a decision made in secret meetings.
Anyone else care to make a comment?
Catherine Adelaide. Yes, the way to save citizens' taxpayer money is to stop breaking the law. You are legislators, and you have to obey the open meetings law.
Four times they broke the law.
Every time of it.
Just a minute. We just went through a court case where we were found not responsible for violating the open meetings.
The judge ruled from the bench.
Four times the law was broken.
Two minor issues, is what was reported.
The judge ruled, or made an oral ruling from the bench.
I'm sorry if your opinion's different than that.
No.
Look at the court record.
The judge ruled from the bench that you broke the law four times. I wrote it down in detail. And also, sir, you misspoke. We do have the right to an appeal. Mrs. Frazier has the right to an appeal. I don't know where you got your information from, that...
When did I say that?
You seem to imply that there was, that she wasn't going to be in appeal.
I think I read it in my statement, that they could appeal this.
Anyway, Councilman Frazier did put the, um, subject of the censure under new business, and so I'm wondering, during a work session, Mr. Gallow brought forth charges. Mr. Eba asked him to draft a resolution. It was brought forth quickly on Monday, and he received a formal censure. So, I'm asking, all of you know that you broke the law, so is anybody going to recommend that Mr. Gallow, which I've drafted the, the resolution, why, are you saying that if you break the law, you won't censure yourselves, the way you censured him? The judge found you violated.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Well, Robin and I showed up for a meeting and were turned away. That's breaking the law. And as to Mr. Flickinger, we had a right to be in the open part of that meeting, and to make an objection, it's in the law, sir, to make an objection, which gets sent to the Open Meetings Compliance Board, and is supposed to be held by the City Council for one year.
Everyone, everyone learns from their mistakes, don't they?
I hope you all...
Most everybody does, not everybody does.
Let me switch for just a second on trash. That trash truck is going on the wrong way, up, down a one-way street. And I asked them about it, they said they knew about it. I just didn't have time to call it in. But there's going to be an accident on Cortlandt Street. They're going the wrong way on a one-way street, so...
Thank you for letting us know that. Anyone else care to make a comment? Well, thank you very much for your attendance tonight and your participation. And again, let's rejoice in the good news that we've been vindicated in the last lawsuit, and hopefully, this, uh...
That didn't happen.
Won't, won't, won't rear its ugly head. So, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's astounding. You've been founded by...